And welcome. Happy New Year if I haven't seen you at the start of this new year. It's nice to see everyone in the room. And to our colleague Webex, welcome and Happy New Year to you as well. Today's town hall meeting is the first one for the spring semester, so we will be anticipating another one after the NIEC visit. And I'm looking forward to updating you on a few things. Our next slide will be the agenda. So I'll provide some college updates. I'll then turn it over to Vice President Lapointe, who will talk today primarily about enrollment and really start to have a conversation about satisfactory academic progression and what that means in terms of financial aid. And then Greg will turn it over to Vice President Sullivan, who will give an overview of where we are in the budget process. And we will wind up with Vice President Gondola, who will talk about events coming up over the spring term and how we look forward to spending some fun time with you all. So today, thank you again for joining me. I just want to talk about some reflections on the spring semester. I think Greg will give you a more detailed view of enrollment. But what I would like to leave you with is our enrollment is up. This should be our seventh, if all things hold, our seventh semester with an increased term-over-term of enrollment. The one thing that has been steady throughout this recovery period following the pandemic is that I think we can all safely say this has been a slow and steady recovery. So same between 2% and 3%, and that's good. We're on the right side, the positive side of the line. But as we know, community colleges really took a disproportionate impact on enrollment retention during the pandemic. So we have a lot of work to do in terms of ensuring that we keep that enrollment up. And at this point, I'd also like to recognize Greg and his team in Student Affairs, Vice President Hanley and the faculty and chair particularly, who have come together and sponsored open houses, looked at scheduling and opportunities for us to engage students as we attempt to increase not only our enrollment, but also looking at our retention. That is a very, very big component of maintaining stability. It's nice to see the parking lot full and people walking around. And let's keep our fingers crossed that it remains to be a healthy spring semester across all campuses. So enrollment, again, Greg will do a deeper dive, but we are in the positive. We still have work to do. I think that's what I will leave you with. And I look forward to partnering with all of you in ways to enhance our attractiveness to students. NIEC, you'll be very glad when March 6th arrives, and you don't hear me talking about this. I'm sure you are fatigued by it, but we've got about a month to go. The self-study has been submitted. It was submitted January 21st. Thank you again publicly to Lauren Webb. And I also want to take a moment to recognize the Institutional Effectiveness Team, particularly led by Phil Gordon. The amount of data that goes into this reporting is just incredible and a superb job all around. I think it's a document that all of us can be proud of when we look at what has changed over 10 years from the last time NIEC visited the institution. So if you have an opportunity, I'd ask you, here are some links to go, take a perusal through the study. It is about 200-plus pages counting all the data forms, but it's 100 pages of narrative. And those 100 pages refer to the nine standards. The team, as we said, just to recap, they will arrive at the college on Sunday evening, March 3rd. Some of you have received an invitation to a kickoff dinner, which is welcoming the team with key members of the leadership and faculty, staff. And that will last about 90 minutes. They will then go back to the Crown Plaza, where they'll be staying, and get ready for two intensive days. We will be putting a schedule out very shortly that will identify opportunities to meet with the team. And we also have Ellen McLaughlin coming in again, for those of you that participated in her presentation in the fall. She will be coming in February 9th. And again, this will be with specific groups so that she can just give any support, answer any questions in terms of what you might anticipate from a visiting team coming to evaluate our ability to meet the nine standards. Remember, as I said before, the purpose of this visit is to look, pre-read the document. And then the team will be coming in to look at each standard that somebody's assigned to each one, verify, clarify, and amplify the information in the document. That is the purpose of their visit. And so they'll be looking for you to do those three things, to maybe clarify some information in there, verify that information. And they might ask for some amplification, where you can really bring it up to a level that makes it a little bit clearer. So they will be here in the college fourth and fifth all day long with meetings with many, many groups and constituents. They have publicized the event in several of the local papers so that the public is aware. And then on Wednesday, March 6th, the chair will give an exit report. And that will be no questions, no answers, no Q and A. The chair will speak solely. And he will run through each standard and basically identify how we met the standard. At that point, they leave the college with their lunch. And we will await the next steps, which it really will be, the finality of it all will be December of '24, when it is put before the commission. So it'll go before several committees with that NIEC over the next immediate months, and then a recommendation to the commissioners on what the disposition of the report is and the status. So thank you to everyone who has participated in this process. We've had a great team effort, and I am very, very proud of the work that's been accomplished and the document that was produced. So we'll keep you posted, and we look forward to celebrating spring break the week after the group leaves. I think everybody will be ready for that. Next month, which starts on Wednesday, Thursday, Thursday, Black History Month. I am so excited to say we've got a month full of wonderful activities and opportunities. We have, I think for the first time, a calendar that really has brought together all the different areas of the college and the activities that are being offered along with the celebration of Black History Month. So there are things happening in the library. There are things happening in Student Affairs, Student Government, DEI activities. We're having a Black Business Expo that I hope becomes a sort of cornerstone activity that we host each year. I'd like to take an opportunity also to recognize Andrea Ray. Is Andrea here?
Yes.
There you are. Andrea has done a superb job. And members of the DEI Council who have worked hard to organize a great month ahead. So please participate in any of the activities that your schedule allows. We're looking forward to this. The next area that I'd like to just update you on is our legislative update. I closed out the fall semester. I believe with reporting to you that we had a very successful legislative open house at the President's House that was very well attended. And now I get to go up to the State House and start meeting with legislators individually. But before I go into what that schedule's going to look like, I just want to say I had just a wonderful, wonderful opportunity and experience of a lifetime a week ago today, where I was attending the State of the State. And to wear the President's gown as someone who entered this institution at a very, very young age, and I will say rightly frightened, to really have that moment of being representative of this college community was just, it was really an experience of a lifetime. And I did not get here alone. So I want to acknowledge all of the faculty, staff, students who basically lifted me up. And it was a great honor to represent the college. I will just share a little story about when the presidential regalia arrived. And it came a little early. We were expecting it more towards the end of the fall semester, but it came in around Thanksgiving, I think. And Deb came in the office and she said, well, here's your gown. And she's opening the box and she lifted it up. And it really was quite a moment. And I said to her, 17 to the President's gown. It's been quite a ride. So just to share what that felt like and thank you each for everything that you've done to support me. Governor, thank you very much. Governor McKee released his budget last week, and Vice President Sullivan will go through a bit of that. We're still combing through everything that was included in it, but you'll get more detail from Vice President Sullivan. This will be a busy season at the State House. So just to remind you of what the process is, the governor releases his budget from his office. It then makes its way through the House and the Senate. So we meet regularly with the governor's office, share what the needs are for the college. And now I will begin to meet with individual legislators who represent committees that are of particular interest to us. So this afternoon, actually, I meet with Senator Kano. And Senator Kano is Chair of the Senate Education Committee. And she's also an alumni of CCRI. So it's really nice going up to the State House because we're increasingly seeing more CCRI alumnis in government. Very, I think this week, I'm meeting with Senator De Palma. Senator De Palma is a very big champion of the community college, and he is Senate Finance Chair. And so we'll be talking dollars and cents. And then later, I meet with Representative McNamara, who chairs the House Committee on Education. So looking forward to bringing forward to them what our needs are, what our priorities are, and advocating for as much as we can get to support this critical institution to the state of Rhode Island. So that concludes the legislative update. I will be looking forward to sharing how we make out as we traverse that landscape. Next and finally, is a trip I got to take on January 10th to the White House. So do we have slides? We don't have slides. Okay, so I won't do it. So I received right before the holidays an invitation that came in with a header that had White House on it. And, "Dear Dr. Costigan, you're invited to a convening of communities in action." And I sent it off to Amy and Deb and said, "Can you check this out?" Because I was the only one on it, and I don't think I'm being invited to a special meeting at the White House. So they did their due diligence. In fact, it was a room full of Rhode Island and Connecticut civic labor, education, nonprofit leaders. And we were invited down, and this is a strategy that President Biden has his team involved with, where representatives from different regions of the country are bringing their states together to talk about two things. And we got to have Commerce Secretary Raimondo address us, Senator Chris Murphy from Connecticut addressed us, and then Jean Spurling, who's an economist that works in the Biden White House, also addressed us, as well as our newly representative, Aimo. So the first part of the afternoon, 1 to 3, was really them going through the strategy of the recovery, the economic recovery for the country, and explaining to us what their approach was. And the approach was that they would put a lot of money into the economy, and they wanted that money to get to the grassroots. Hence why all of us were in those rooms. So it went to schools, it went to businesses, it went to civic organizations and to governments. And they learned their lesson going back to the crisis of, the financial crisis of 2008 through 2010, where President Obama rightfully at the time thought he would infuse dollars in and then go back and ask for more later. And what happened is when they went back to ask for more, they were denied those dollars. So the theory was, let's put the money upfront, get it to the people who need it. And they felt that their story, you know, they wanted to hear our stories. How did we put that money to use? So I did get to share that 39 million we received in funds from '21 through the final dispersion was put towards, half of it had to go toward student support. And that was helping students stay in school, helping them with technology. And the other half was helping the college remain a current service level of operations. So as you will all remember, 2019, the fall started off great. We were riding high, and we were on the cusp of the highest enrollment that we had seen in many, many years. And I was with the Senate the other day, and I said, "Some of us remember the days of 18,000 students. That disappeared around the 2010s." And we really fell, fell, fell. And then by 2019, we were up around nearly 15,000 students. So what happened in the advent of the pandemic is that we saw the bottom fall out. We got down to about 10,000 students. And without the dollars that came in from the federal government, we would not have been able to maintain the current service level of operations. So that was my story. And there were probably about 75 people in the room. But it was a great time to connect with fellow leaders from Rhode Island and Connecticut. So also, CCRI was the only higher ed institution represented for Rhode Island. So it was really wonderful to also represent the college for that event. That concludes my updates right now. I'm going to hand it over to Vice President Lapointe, and then we'll have an opportunity for some questions and answers at the end.
So I have a good morning. I have three slides for you. You can get to the next slide. The first slide is on winter session enrollment. I'll talk you briefly through that. The next slide is around where we currently are with spring enrollment. And then the last slide, it's a bit dense. It is around SAP. And so I think we're going to have questions after all the presentations.
Questions.
Shiloh, I believe, is in Lincoln. She is Leader for Enrollment Management, so she'll be able to take any detailed questions around our enrollment strategy and position. And then Kelly, who's also in Lincoln today, will help answer any really nuanced, detailed questions around SAP. But kind of what the chart says here is, you know, we've been on a nice incremental increase since we started this work back in winter of 2019. What I do want to say is for the academic deans, for the department chairs, a big thank you. Like, we don't get to this enrollment and outcome position without you partnering with our enrollment management team. Without a course schedule, you don't get to enrollment and you don't get to outcomes that we want. So a big thank you. You know, we're in the midst right now of preparing for summer and fall, you know, enrollment season. So really up 22% from last year and by 200% increase from when we kicked this off back in the winter of 2019. When I quickly looked at, the outcomes continue to be strong for our students in this compressed format. And we had nearly, you know, 90% of our full-time faculty participating in a winter session and teaching those courses. So I continue, this will be an important strategy for the college, for our students to get credit accumulation and to move at a quicker pace, to move on, graduate and move on, transfer, get into the workforce. So next slide, please. A little bit more nuanced here where we are today. This reflects today's current enrollment report. Our budget is based on that blue cob, 11-0-7-5. We really want to stay, when we get to the drop for non-payment on February 5th, we really want to be above 11-7-5. And you'll notice that 11-0-7-5. You'll notice that we're kind of in the same phenomenon we had in the fall. I think I shared a high point with you early in the town hall for the fall. Our high point was yesterday, 11-0-7-5. And we will slowly see this erode over the next week or so due to the verification of enrollment, due to the drop for non-payments. So we collectively, as a community, really need to do what we can to ensure that we stay above 11-0-7-5. And the outcome is, if we look at the fall, you know, we are short, I think it's almost 400K in revenue from the fall. And we really don't want to continue that trend as we move into the spring. But great news, I am super appreciative of everyone around this room and virtually to where we are today, 11-700, up 625 Rhode Islanders. And a few things, we have the drop for non-payment. It's a big number. There's 1,412 students at this moment. That represents $2.9 million that we need to square away before February 5th. And I think what I really want to point out is, over the last, I'd say, year or two, there's been a number of redesign changes in the division. And this is the why. We can't continue as an institution to operate with the VOE, with the drop for non-payment. So there's several, Jude, I don't know, I didn't see yet, but Jude runs point with VOE. We must continue to make incremental improvements in the processes and the outcomes of the verification of enrollment. I just met with Student Government yesterday and their leadership about how we can bring Student Government into this work to make it more, to make our students more aware of what needs to get done and the impact, because it is impacting hundreds of Rhode Islanders, their peers. Drop for non-payment, there is a task force that is in play. It is going to take the new SEIA that's coming on board in IT. The machine needs to do a lot of the work. But the fact that we're managing nearly $3 million, 1,400 students, in September 5th is on, well, Monday. We can't continue to be in this position. It impacts all of us. So it is part of the why. And then the next slide, I think that's kind of the dates. We are trying to get to, the goal here, the way it works, is we got to get to 11-7-5 on census, which is March 5th. And I do, I am super optimistic of where we're going to be. But again, I really want to point out, these are the things that we must control and is part of the why, at least particularly what you've seen in the Division of Student Affairs, some of the changes and the redesigns that are happening. I think the last slide. All right, so I know there's a lot of slides. I'll walk you through each piece. But I've been talking about SAP probably for the last year or so with similar slides. What we know is 11% or 886 students that were with us in the fall will not be back here in the spring because they did not meet the federal financial aid staff requirements. And those are where the percent sign is. This is a meaningful impact on our enrollment outcomes and financial position. And what we do know is, you've probably heard a lot of work that's happening, has happened, is happening around developmental education, Caesar Advantage. You know, I just had a conversation around math is having a math jumpstart. That proportion, the 70% or 69%? 69% of the 886 students are, were assessed and placed in developmental education in ESF courses, okay? And so what happens is when a student gets on SAP, if our student success coaches and the financial aid team isn't able to kind of chase them down, and it happens on an individual basis, the student success coaches are meeting with their assigned students that are on this, on the SAP, that have a SAP issue. They need to understand their situation, see if appeal is appropriate. It's a one-on-one transaction. So we really need to continue to focus on what we can do both inside and outside the classroom so we can lower these proportions and the number of students that are hitting SAP. And that's just the fall. I was with you back in spring. And when we ran the drop, when we ran the SAP at the end of the spring term, spring 2023, there's 3,457 students that hit that. There's just not enough Rhode Islanders. We are not a national brand, our market. We are the community college of Rhode Island. There is just not enough students to account for this term. And so we must continue to kind of see what we can do in this place. What we did, one of the policy changes that we made last year was instead of running SAP at the end of the term in, say, May, it's run after every semester. So what this does now is there are 1,868 students that were with us in the fall. And unfortunately, they did not have a great academic experience in the classroom. And what that means is we have now flagged them. So our student success coaches, the financial aid team, we're now working with them because now we have a runway. Now they know that, hey, if things don't turn around in this spring semester, they are not going to meet SAP. And likely, unless there is a critical circumstance in their life, they're not going to get financial aid. And 84% of our students in the fall received federal financial aid. So long gone are the days that people are paying by credit card and check and cash for using federal financial aid. So I do think there is a lot of promise in what we're doing now, running SAP every semester, giving students in our team, our student success coaches and financial aid, a bit of runway to work with students. And, you know, often they're chasing students down. And so I do think over time, we will get better. But that's one of the strategies. And the other item here is there are 1,304 students that earned zero credits. So they made it through VOE, they made it through the drop for non-payment process, they hit census. So what we can see at the end of the term is they earned zero credits. And that has a meaningful impact on pace and outcome. We do see, and there's a group of Jude and Kelly and folks are beginning to work on, you know, what does the NA grade mean to that and how is it contributing? So more to come on that. And I think what I want to leave you with is this last piece. You know, if you're in the Division of Student Affairs, you know SAP has been a big piece of what I've been hyper-focused on. We've made a number of changes, and this is why. So between SAP was run in May, end of May, June, July, August, our student success coaches, our directors, our financial aid staff, they worked with 1,404 students to get them under proofed appeal. That equates to $4.1 million. This is something that we can't ignore. Just imagine what our conversation would be like right now if we didn't put that hyper-focus on. We would be nearly probably $4 million short. And so this is why we're going to continue to kind of work through this, both in the short and the long term. And I think one of the things I really this, both in the short and the long term. And I think, one of the things I really want to talk about why it's important is, you'll see that 6% or 89 students, those 89 students would not have graduated. These are Rhode Islanders that if our student success coaches and that team and financial aid didn't work one-on-one with these 89 students, they would have not graduated. So again, a big thank you to everyone that's involved in this. I know the change. But this is kind of the reasons of why we're really focused on the drop for non-payment, VOE and SAP, and more to come. And I do think our ability to figure out what we can do with developmental education reforms and ESL reforms is really going to help us both in the short and the long term, given the proportion of students that are being placed or assessed in developmental education and what we do is where we see them a semester or a year after. So again, I'm super optimistic. And we can certainly take questions. I know some of this is a bit nuanced at the end. But again, thank you and a big thank you to everyone in this room and virtually, because it is a collective community effort that's going to take us to where we want to be. So Rich, it's all you.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Please, we could get together as a community and review what the governor has included in his budget. That came out on Thursday night, January 18. And before I get into the details, I wish to thank Anne Marie McMahon, who is our Director of Budgeting and Financial Analysis. She's sitting by one of the poles here. Yeah, probably trying to be out of sight. But it's her extensive background, not only at CCRI, but in state budgeting, that allows her to know where to go. I was reviewing with her, where can we get this? Well, I got it here, I got it there. It's amazing where you have to go. It's a scavenger hunt to get the information to understand the budget. So thank you, Anne Marie. We've been reviewing the details. And as you'll see, as, I hope you'll see, is that the governor's budget is reflecting a more conservative approach. And as President Kostig had mentioned, driven by the federally provided pandemic relief funds largely going away, largely have already gone away. And there'll be two aspects of the budget I'll review here. One is the operating budget, the other is the facilities capital budget. Starting with the operating budget, you'll see here, the governor had some messaging leading up to this. President Kostig and I met with him on the Friday before the state address. And this result is not a surprise, given what he said there and other public statements that he made. And that is, regardless of what URI, RIC and CCRI, all the specifics you put in there, all the good work you identified you wish to do, we're going to provide them across the board, 2.6% on your fiscal '24 budget to go get to your fiscal '25 budget. So that's 2.6%. On top of that, they're also passing through some, providing some revenue to offset some costs they're going to be charging us for their new Workday ERP system. Those two net to zero. So effectively, the real increase we received, RIC and URI as well, was 2.6% on the fiscal, over the fiscal '24 budget. Moving on to the next slide, which is the capital improvement plan. I apologize for all the digits up there for you not to read, but I'll highlight you some of the takeaways from my point of view, anyway. Our request that we put in, we requested something like $270 million worth of funding for all years. That was based upon a Goody Clancy study that the college performed, a very extensive study a few years ago. Prior year request was based on that, has a lot of great information on it. But we asked for 270 million. The good thing is, when you ask for such a big number, even if you get a small fraction of it, it's still a big number. And the governor included $20 million of additional capital funding. And which included, of that 20 million, we had requested 10 million as part of GEO bonds. They're not doing any GEO bonds for us, but they beefed up our RICAP funding, which is the annual appropriation. So we're getting $20 million in total, which is a good thing. And if you look at the graph over the next several years, what we have in the draft budget bill is 110, over $110 million. Just want to point out, the legislature can only appropriate one year at a time. So when the '25 budget gets passed, '24 and '25 will be in the books in terms of committed funding. The other years are considered planning values, which we should get, but, you know, things can happen. But they've told us, expect to get this amount. As you can see, for the next three years, we're averaging close to $30 million a year for David Snow, Mark Labuti and others to be, you know, to be able to improve our facilities based upon the works that that's been done. Goody Clancy study on forward by many, many people throughout CCRI. So thank you all. And one of the themes coming from Greg's presentation was teamwork. And the budget process teamwork, the capital budget teamwork, there's teamwork through all of this. And where we go from here that I'll highlight at the end, my discussion will be teamwork as well. And you'll probably hear it, the governor just did include GEO bonds for RIC, for a cybersecurity center and for URI, for Life Sciences facility. That still has to go by the legislature and into the voters. Powers doesn't have the voter approval necessary, it just needs to go through the legislature. Going to the next slide, some of our funding comes through the Office of the Post-Secondary Commissioner. Rhode Island Promise, we have $7.9 million in there, which I believe Greg says, we'll get funding for whatever we need. And then the Promise dollar, they're increasing by 1.3 million up to 6.4 million in dual enrollment, another 2.3 million. So good things, those programs are essentially continuing. And then getting to the bottom of that slide, and President Kostig touched on it. It's the third pillar of our three-pronged approach, tireless advocacy for our students. And that's what we're entering into here. So March and April legislative hearings, meetings, one-on-one between our president and the key leaders in the legislature. Then the, there's a conference, revenue estimating conference, which is the State Budget Office, the Senate and the House getting together and agree on revenue estimates of '24 and '25, which will help inform the budgets they pass. Hopefully by June 30, the House passes, the budget bill is signed, and then July 1, we're off to the start of the new year. And where do we go from here? Takeaway, I'd like to see us have, as Dr. Kostig had mentioned, the post-pandemic recovery is moving, moving in the right direction for CCRI, but it's a slow process. The winding down of the pandemic relief funds means that we need to optimize our operational efficiencies and effectiveness. And we'll be reviewing the funding we're getting here in the context of that. Who's the weight? It's the community broadly defined. I've been working with Anne Marie, the finance staff, folks in HR, folks in student affairs, the senior leadership team and others to get more granular understanding of our fiscal monitoring and planning. That's a work-in-process. We made, you know, a lot of progress, but we need to move that forward. In particular, 77% of CCRI's unrestricted expenses are personnel salaries and benefits. So understanding where we stand with personnel costs, we've been putting a lot of time in that for things like full-time position rosters, float reporting for all categories, full-time and part-time, to try to get a better understanding. And in particular now, as the smoke clears, we had pre-pandemic, we have post-pandemic, and then in between, a lot was happening, but kind of clouding that picture were the pandemic relief funds. So now the pandemic relief funds are gone. We're at the end of this, with this tunnel. We're trying to assess, how has our profile as an institution changed? And as part of that, how has the financial profile changed? And so with that, I'll turn it back to Dr. Kostig. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you, Vice President Sullivan. And I also want to acknowledge what you and your team have been doing in terms of creating reporting that does look at forecasting, which is something relatively new here at the college, to help us make assumptions and build budgets with more certainty. So thank you for the work that you and your team is doing. And now I'd like to turn it over to our Associate Vice President, Bobby Nambula, to talk about some key events coming up for the spring semester.
Great. And with your permission, Dr. Kostig, can I make, can I take just two minutes out of our Q1 time to make sure I can make a special announcement in this space? Awesome. So just want to make sure I can manage the content that I was looking forward to sharing with you all during this time. And thank you to the Providence campus for hosting our board, our foundation board meeting this morning. And glad to hear that our colleagues in Lincoln are on the line and certainly loving on that campus. So this Q1-Q2 Look Back features just a quick highlight of major awards that we've received this year to date. And so a special shout out to Dean Alman for her work contributions. She was at the table in those final meetings as we were procuring that partnership with Bally's and really impressed with the work that you and the academic team, our colleagues in chairs, Cochrane and Crawford and others that have been contributing to the build-out of implementation of that work. And certainly looking forward to our colleagues in workforce, Vice President Johnson and your team on all of the workforce partnership and integrative work that we have there. With Strata, just want to acknowledge and recognize the work that Dr. Schmitz and our dental team have done in our partnership with Delta Dental of Rhode Island. And I imagine that you all have seen, I shared our last gathering, one of the busiest spots that's in market. And it's just really exciting to see how that partnership has continued to grow. And Professor Galishaw was able to share a really great update that got a lot of attention nationally amongst our peers in that cohort as a top 10 winner. Luminous, special gratitude to our facilities team. I see Dave Snow is here, Mike Arcato is here. The contributions that they've made as partners on this grant is really exciting as we just further anchor and center the student aesthetic in our campus spaces. And then want to acknowledge Maddie Burke for the work that she was doing related to dual enrollment in Providence that's supported by the Carnegie Grant. So that's what we've had this past year. We'll go to the next slide, which I can summarize in one sentence, which is, we are about 50% of the way through the fiscal year, and we've raised about 50% of our fundraising to date. So as far as the seasonality and positioning of the year, we're exactly where we should be. Of course, I like to be ahead and the team likes to be ahead. And so we've engaged in a number of efforts to close our budget on time and on budget, and we are still on track to do that. You'll all help us with that as we enter the Q4 and raising opportunities. So we can go to the next slide, which, this summarizes impact. And so how is the Foundation Advancement Team supporting the work that you are all doing across the college? Well, college support, this is really the anchor grants that we've supported year-to-date. And these are, these are programs that our colleagues are implementing, like the Bally's that I mentioned and all those others that I opened the conversation with. Scholarships, direct student support. Greg, Vice President LePointe, heard you speak to where we are with the VOE and drop for non-payment. And so happy that in our continued and evolving innovative partnership with financial aid, Kelly and team will work with students to support the pilot of a new scholarship, the Just in Time Scholarship. At the beginning of this week, I got a text from an old college friend I hadn't heard from in a long time, saying, I'm connected to this student at the college. And there, you know, the story was, there's some immediate crisis that's preventing continued enrollment. And that was on Monday. I shared a link that's publicly available. And that everyone here, please know, if a student is in need, we have a number of scholarships on the financial aid webpage that our advisors and our counselors are supporting students with. And that student, I got a notification yesterday with a thank you, saying thank you so much for my award. So those, that process, we've turned around very quickly and efficiently. It's no longer kept in a secret door in some office. It's right there online. And it's, our focus is that it's an equitable experience for students to be able to applying of the support that they deserve to continue with their work. And this is a great summary of that work. So I'll move next to the faculty innovation announcement. So congratulations to 10 projects that have been funded by our faculty innovation fund program. This is the second year. And just really honored to raise the funds and then turn around and support the, our colleagues in bringing just new opportunities to students in classrooms across all of our campuses. So congratulations. I just think that the announcement is either in your inbox at this moment or soon to be in your inbox. And so it will detail these projects. But thank you to Dr. Rogers and to Vice President Hanley for serving on our review panel. And to our colleagues that won this year, congratulations. In the board meeting this morning, our trustees were particularly inspired by the commitment and projects that this community has put forward. And so we're so proud to be able to support this. And the way that we're able to support this is, I'll go to the last slide, which is our Raising Opportunities benefit. And of course, we have our tribute to talent gathering at commencement. And so when I think about Raising Opportunities, there was a year that we were projecting our fundraising year. And we've had year-over-year growth in that event every year since we started that program. This will be, what, our eighth, yeah, eighth annual Raising Opportunities benefit. And the year that we were coming out of the pandemic, we just weren't sure that people were going to come back and come out in support in the way that they had before. And that year, we broke our attendance record and we also broke our fundraising record. For those of you that were there, that was at our Lincoln campus. So I think about our facilities team, our HR colleagues, the student affairs team, I think you had three tables there, our teams from across the college coming out and supporting. I have my dance partner and Senator, President, Senate President Kerry Freel. So we really had an amazing event. And we broke a fundraising record and we broke an attendance record. And that was because of the generosity, personal generosity of our colleagues at the college contributing to that event. So we will need to take up the entire Lincoln, what is that building called?
Fieldhouse.
Fieldhouse, thank you. We will take up the entire part of that space. And if you're interested in purchasing a table or co-purchasing a table with colleagues, Rich Poirier from our team is in the corner here. And you can reach out to, not Rich, Ralph. Rich is right there. Ralph is in the corner over there, Rich Poirier. And he can help with purchasing the tables and sponsorships for the event. And more to come on commencement in the coming days. So with that, pass it back to you, Dr. Kostig.
Well, thank you. Thank you to our presenters today. And at this point, we'll open it up to questions. We start in the room, Amy? Okay. So please, any questions you have for myself or the presenters? We're trying to get.
No questions.
No questions? Okay. Well, feel free to raise your hand while we're entertaining questions from our virtual friends there. Are we able to get them, Amy, or?
Yeah, I'm just waiting if any are coming in.
Okay. Did we have any pre or?
There were no, there was one pre-submitting question about sharing the recording of the town hall after.
Okay.
So we answered that one in advance. But there's still nothing in chat.
I may just add that I did have the opportunity to meet with the advancement board and the alumni board today. And so it was really great to be in a room full of people that are particularly our alumni. alumni are so inspiring because many have been involved for years and years. But our advancement, to look around and see partners who really have just come to grow and know the college and dedicate their time, it really is, it really is motivating. And we're looking forward, and I should have started off also by saying that I have spent a great bit of time over the past couple of months also meeting with major employer partners. So recently, I met with the president of lifespan, John Fernandez, who is a huge champion of our, our college and our graduates. He told me, I believe, there are 85 nurses that they hired, which is the largest cohort of hires for nursing. And so we're very, very proud of that. And we've been to Electric Boil, we've been, we've been a follower. Yeah.
Landmark.
Landmark. We were just at Landmark Medical Center last week, and they actually rolled out the red carpet for us. And, and so we've got some really, really good partnerships going on in the community. And one other area and strategy, just building off of what Vice President LePointe was talking about, you know, we, we know that we're expecting declines in, we're already experiencing in high school graduates due to a decline in the birth rate that happened in the late ones and into the early tens, right? So not really expecting to see an uptick in the number of graduates from high school until 2030. And there could be a significant, we're just on the cusp of it starting, significant drop off. So I'm telling you this because again, as we said, there's only so many Rhode Islanders. And then we've got this other overlay where people are questioning the value proposition of going to college. So that is very, very prevalent in, in our conversations nationally. So this is why our early college programs are very, very critical to us and also preparation boot camp style programs, so that when the students do come into, to the college and they're, they're ready, that we can retain them and they can be successful because retention also has a monetary increase to the bottom line. So early college is definitely an area that you've heard me talk about before and very grateful for the leadership of Maddie Burke, who, who really is our point person with Ryan and K-12 in terms of making sure that we're keeping lines of communication open. And then our academic deans and student affairs enrolling people that make sure the students come in and receive the courses and supports that they need. Got a question?
Yes, thank you. So it is 12:56. I know we were hoping to end this in an hour, but we did have more make comment and a question come in on the chat. They say, thanks Rosemary, great town hall. And what can the staff expect with the NIEC visit coming to town? What should they do? How do you read yourself?
I would say the first thing you can do is access that self-study. Now, I'm not going to tell you to read 100 pages. I'm a teacher, I'm a professor, but I'm not going to make you read 100 pages. But if you are in the finance area, then go to standard seven. If you're in IT, go to standard seven, the subcategory for IT. If you are a faculty, you need to be looking at standards four and six, which will be the academic program and then what is the professional development and requirements to be faculty member. So I think if you can look at the report and identify where you fall, standard seven is, the vice president deserves like, I don't know, some sort of an award, I guess. Maybe I'll buy you a Diet Coke, Rich, because we both.
My Dave Robinson, he was writing in months before I was here.
So standard seven, it is, it includes HR, it includes finance, it includes IT, it includes the library, doesn't it? Is the library in there or?
Yes.
And it includes facilities. So it is a very, very big standard. So find where you think you fit and at least do a, a good read of that, of that chapter. And Lauren, are you, where are you, Lauren? You're, I mean, in the back. Lauren, is that good advice? Yeah. And so, well, and we also, if you're going to be, you know, you will know what groups you're in to meet with, you know, to meet with the team when they come. We'll have faculty lunch, we'll have student lunch, and there'll be plenty of opportunities. But yes, and once you're familiar with at least your own standard, again, they're going to be looking for clarification, verification and highlighting some examples of that.
We have one more comment from our friend, John Aboujo.
Yes.
He wanted to say, congratulations to the faculty innovation award winners. And thank you to all of the panelists for the information you provided and to explain how we can collectively contribute to the great work moving the college forward.
Excellent. And Bobby, did you have something you wanted to add? Or did you get everything yet?
Oh, thank you for asking. I mean, what I'll do is make sure that at a later moment, I'm sharing with the college community some detail on the projects, but I want to recognize Professor Patton is here. Is there anyone else in the room that received one of the fellowship awards? So congratulations to you, Professor Patton.
My classmate, right? I can all hear, yes. We're not giving away any states. Congratulations. Yes.
One quick question, any word on when construction is going to be done?
I, I hear that we are doing very, very well and ahead of schedule, but I am going to defer this to the, to the expert over there.
We are on budget and on schedule.
Is that fall 2025? Is that the generalist?
I would, I would expect that a, that we will see quite a bit of activity in the fall going into the winter in terms of wrapping things up. There's a lot of critical points that still need to be completed that until they are, I just don't want to commit because once I commit, Murphy's.
The original, it sounds like.
Twenty twenty-five, but it sounds.
The original timeline was, you know, we would, to be in the student affairs, we would be there fall 2025. It sounds like there might be an opportunity to be there a little bit sooner.
Yes.
That's what I'm thinking from what.
Yes.
We have an elevator to install up on, and my history with the school and the elevator is getting installed on time is, is challenging. So until I see that elevator in and running, I don't feel comfortable in committing. I will tell you, our contractor, Al Burke, has been phenomenal. They are on this and they are insisting to me that the schedule for the elevator is right on target. When that happens, maybe we'll have a more definitive timeline for transitioning the village into its new home.
Thank you, David. Bobby, you did have something.
Yeah, the one passage that I really moved from the conversation that I would put on the table because it's forward-looking work is a number of funding opportunities that are coming down the pipe, both on the public side and on the private side. And so as you're engaged or motivated, encouraged to come forward and say, here's an effort, here's a project, here's an opportunity. Dean's Heimel Carr, super active at putting together these and working with colleagues. I know we're working with Professor Rieger on Rhode Island Energy Grant. There's a number of opportunities we have coming down the pipe, nursing and complete healthcare pipeline on the, on the allied health and nursing side, including dental assisting. And just really happy and grateful to work with our team, Kim Perry and others there.
And many opportunities in, as a result of the designation that we are a Hispanic-serving institution and many members of the faculty and the deans have been, you know, meeting often, some of certainly Jen's folks as well, compiling a list. And we think we really want to make a mark in recognition of our new status.
Yes, yes. And Rhode Island College also designated, we're at 28%. I think they've just gotten back to 25. And how we can even leverage something together. But there is, there are some federal financial funds available for that, so we're excited certainly for that designation. Well, I think we're over. Are we, Amy?
Yeah.
So with that, have a great start to the semester and look forward to seeing you throughout the, the next several weeks. And we will have another update in, in March, early April. Thank you.